Good morning. I'd like to call to order the January 30th, 2018 special call meeting of the Indian River County Board of County Commissioners. We will have an invocation which will be given by Commissioner Susan Adams. That will be followed by the pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Joseph Fletcher. And we will start things off with a moment of silent reflection for our first responders. Would everybody please rise?
Dear Lord, as we come together today to meet to serve our community, we ask for guidance that we use our resources wisely and well, that we represent all members of our community fairly, and that we make decisions that promote the common good. We recognize our responsibility to the past and the future and the rights and needs of both individuals and community. May we act wisely and well in all that we do today. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Please join with me in the pledge of allegiance to the greatest nation on earth, the United States of America.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Commissioners, first, I'd like to thank you all for adjusting your schedules and to be available for this special call meeting. And secondly, we have another event here in this venue at 10:30. Hopefully, we won't run into that, but if we start running out of time, I will have to call us to final debate and make a decision at some point, probably before 10:15, so just kind of keep an eye on the time. For the members of the public, this is an open meeting, so if anyone from the public does wish to speak, we will make sure we grant you time to do that once we get through staff and the applicant presentations. So with that, we'll go ahead and move on the agenda to departmental matters. The first item under Public Works is consideration of substantial progress on Seventeenth Street Southwest and Twenty-seventh Avenue intersection, Millstone Landing, and Rich Spirica, the Public Works Director. Good morning, Rich.
Good morning, Commissioners. Rich Spirica, the Public Works Director. Back on December 13th of 2017, I sent a letter to SLV Millstone with regards to a developer's agreement in which they were required to have Seventeenth Street Southwest and Twenty-seventh Avenue completed by December 31st, 2017. In that letter, I specified that, based on my inspection, they would not be done by December 31st, and that we would move forward with the suspension of building permits and the issuance of COs until such time as they were completed. On January 9th, the board considered a proposal for allowing certificates of occupancy to be approved and signed off on until February 28th, 2018. The board acted on this issue by directing the Public Works Director to monitor the work being done on Seventeenth Street and Twenty-seventh Avenue and report back to the commission chair on January 26th as whether or not substantial progress had been made on the project. On January 25th, county staff met with SLV Millstone, and we discussed the progress of the project. They submitted a status report to us for review, and we discussed several items in the meeting. We discussed what they had completed and what was still outstanding. On January 26th, the county administrator and I met with the chairman onsite at around 3 o'clock to look at the progress of the project. The project had significant progress. They had constructed most of the base material and the curbing going toward the west to a point of about 300 feet from the Millstone entrance onto Seventeenth Street. They had done some paving on Twenty-seventh Avenue, and they had moved forward quite a bit on the project in the three weeks since January 9th. At that meeting, it was decided that a special call meeting would be done, and here we are today. So, based on that information, we have four items that we think we're presenting to the board for their discussion. The first item is to reinstate the issuance of certificates of occupancy for the residential units within the Millstone Landing subdivision, to continue the suspension of building permits, as well as the acceptance of new building permits into the permitting process for the Millstone Landing subdivision until the construction of Seventeenth Street Southwest and Twenty-seventh Avenue reaches substantial completion as determined by the Public Works Director. The third item is that the board reserves the right to cease the issuance of certificates of occupancy for future residential units within the Millstone Landing subdivision if the developer does not continue to make significant progress on the project. And lastly, the board stipulates that the developer will have 60 days from today's date, which would be March 31st, 2018, to complete the project. If the project is not complete by this time, the board authorizes the Public Works Director and the Community Development Director to cease issuance of certificates of occupancy.
Commissioners, any questions of Rich on this item? Rich, what I'm going to ask you to do is because I think it's important in the big picture that the board is aware of all things going on there, so would you please go ahead and give us the status report on Twenty-third Street Southwest? I just think in the big picture, we need to know where everything is on that.
Sure. Twenty-third Street Southwest is a...well, I'll just go through the agenda that I have for you, give you the overall picture. Basically, in December of 2017, the board approved a second amendment to developer's agreement, which allowed the developer to have a date certain for the improvements on Twenty-third Street Southwest. Now, these improvements require that a roadway be built. Right now, there's a 10-foot asphalt roadway. The requirement back when the developer first came in as part of the project, previous to SLV Millstone, was required to build Twenty-third Street Southwest to a 22-foot wide roadway with sidewalk and retention. At the same meeting where we met on the site for Seventeenth Street Southwest, we went down to Twenty-third. Construction has not begun. There has been no clearing. There has been nothing done down on that that you can visually see. I estimate that it'll take 90 to 120 days to get that project complete, which means that we should see the start of construction on that portion of the project by March 1st, which is just about a month away, in order for them to meet their deadline in July. So now we have Twenty-third Street where the developer needs to start construction on March 1st, and we have Seventeenth Street Southwest where they need to continue and be done construction if the board approves the recommendations by staff by March 31st, 2018.
And, Rich, on Twenty-third Street, failure to meet the deadline would still have the same consequences, the termination of issuing any certificates of occupancy, and the termination of accepting or issuing any building permits? Is that correct?
It is my understanding that we do have that option. I'd have to defer to Bill DeBrol or Dylan for that.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Fletcher?
Rich, what was the purpose of having the developer's agreement on both of these scenarios for the project? I mean, what was the reasoning to have the developer go forward with this commitment?
Well, in development, I can do...there's two answers to that. Number one, in the developer's agreement, they were required to move forward at a certain amount of time, at a certain certificate of occupancy rate. Basically, in a nutshell, Millstone Landing has one access point on 21st Street Southwest, and there's, if I remember correctly, 360 units between, on the north side of 21st Street or south of Seventeenth Street Southwest. So a second access was necessary, hence the Seventeenth Street Southwest access point.
So, and basically, the premise is about burdening of the roadways, local infrastructure, the community, with the development of housing?
Mm-hmm. Correct. It's a developer's requirement. In other words, the infrastructure was not there to support the development at the time. We deferred Seventeenth Street Southwest rather than have the developer, the original developer, build it all at once. We allowed for a developer's agreement to move forward to give them a stepped improvement, so their cash flow wasn't all up at the top. They were able to defer some of the improvements to a later date, and hence why we're here with 200 and, or 300 and something, certificates of occupancy within the first three phases, and we're still building the access point on Seventeenth Street Southwest.
So they were given great latitude, and we did not endanger the public or burden the public's safety element?
No. I would say that this access point, right now, I don't believe there's an issue, but we need to get this access moving and completed for the residents.
But a lot of public inconvenience?
Absolutely.
Okay. And maybe for Counselor, what was the bond rate on this project?
For this particular, for Seventeenth Street Southwest, there was no bond. That's why we have a developer's agreement.
Isn't it customary to have a bond regarding a developer's agreement as far as assurity?
We typically have bonds and letters of credit for internal improvements and warranty for maintenance. The off-site improvements are enforcement mechanism, is the certificates of occupancy and the building permits. I will say that these developer's agreements, and we have dozens of them out there, are an effort to make, to not place another hurdle in front of a developer when they're developing properties who are working with them, so that they don't have to construct those improvements when they were first billed the development, but only when the threshold is triggered. That's where the 386 COs comes from, is that that's when an intersection is warranted there. So without this, they would have had to construct this intersection back in 2004 when they were first developing the project. And I'll just say that this is a way that we try and work with development, and we're currently going through a process right now where, honestly, I have to say, we've been criticized for being bureaucratic and not helpful to the development process. So this whole situation has put staff in a bad spot here, because here, we have been criticized from some folks for not working well enough with developers, and then here's a situation where we work with developers and county staff gets put in a tight spot here when the improvements aren't done on time.
And to add to that, on the Twenty-third Street Southwest, we did have a bond for that one, but when it was added to the developer's agreement as a second amendment, that bond went back to the developer as part of the board action.
So what's the recourse if things don't go in the right direction?
COs and building permits. That's where we're at today.
And that's why it's key. You'll see the third bullet in staff's recommendation is that we have the ability, that we will stop issuance of COs again if progress halts. My concern here is if we start issuing COs again, if nothing happens out there for two months, we're turning it off again. And we need to make sure that that's clear here today, that this is not, if we start issuing COs again, that that is not a final action, that there is the ability for staff to stop issuing COs again. I think that's very key, and that's why we also have the recommendation that we don't issue any more building permits, so that we're not creating more CO problems down the road on Seventeenth Street or on Twenty-third Street.
Mr. Chairman, I have nothing else at this time.
Commissioner Flora?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Chairman, but it seems to me that you're, at least part of your reasoning for having Mr. Spirica bring up the Twenty-third Street Southwest construction area now is to try to show that the present item, the Seventeenth Street Southwest and Twenty-seventh Avenue, is not some one-off event that's excusable by the specific circumstances around Seventeenth Street and Twenty-seventh Avenue, but perhaps more the indication of the way the developer seems to be handling some of its responsibilities related to the project.
That is certainly half of my thought process, Commissioner. Part of it is, you know, there's not a really good track record here, in my opinion. A lot of the work they did in the last three weeks could have been done prior to December 31st. Nothing changed materially, had nothing to do with FPL. This is all work that was entirely within SLV Millstone's capability to do, but they didn't do it by the end of December, and they didn't do all of it in the three weeks' grace period we gave them. My second concern is with the Twenty-third Street is, you know, given the track record, I don't see that being done on time. So I'm worried about this whiplash effect that we open up COs for two months, and then we have to close it, then we may open it back up, and then we have to close it again. And, you know, Commissioner Zork, when he brought this up, had a very good point. You know, the innocent people here, the ones that have put money down and are hoping to close on a homestead, are the ones really getting impacted. And so we've got a big enough problem now with those homes that are ready to go but can't get a CO, and I'm afraid that, given the track record on this whole project, we're going to get this whiplash effect where there's going to be a window of COs, then it'll be closed, and a window enclosed. And so that's why I just brought up Twenty-third, is I think it's part of the bigger picture here of the entire development. And as Rich mentioned, you know, we amended it with the second agreement, which freed up the bond money for the developer. I mean, that was a good faith effort that we did, and yet, nothing's happened on Twenty-third, and I'm just very hesitant to believe that that's going to get done on time. So to me, it all kind of wraps up into the overall project. And again, as Rich emphasized, our only stick in this case is the COs and building permits.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the background, and I think the public will have a much better understanding of this based on your comments. Thank you.
Commissioner Zork?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was the one that kind of started this discussion on January 9th after receiving some calls from home builders, and I want to separate the developer from the home builders because they're completely separate entities. The home builders have no control over the developer, other than, I suppose, if they can't get permits, they don't have to purchase more lots from the developer under their takedown agreement. But just a couple of history items. These would be before your time, so Stan may actually have the answers on these. To my understanding, that the improvements to Seventeenth and Twenty-third were all originally part of the South County Initiative, where you had, the roads were going to continue to the west of 58th, and you had other improvements within that region. Everything west of Millstone, to my understanding, that developer's agreement with the other folks that would actually take the roads to somewhere, right now, they're just going to stop because there's no agreement in place from any other developer that would get roads to the west of 58th Avenue. So these, so people don't wonder, why does the road not go to 58th? Well, this agreement would never get the road to 58th Avenue to the west. At least, that's my understanding, and Stan can let me know if my thinking is correct or not. Also, again, this will be before your time, Rich, but when Millstone came in, didn't they, Stan, how many millions of dollars of impact fees did Millstone pay in advance? And were not some of those funds used to build the Oslo and Twenty-seventh Avenue improvements with some of their traffic impact fees? In other words, the impact fees collected are not being used to build Seventeenth or Twenty-third, but because they're not collectors, but they were used for the Twenty-seventh Avenue and Oslo improvements?
Right. Just a couple of things. Stan Bowling, Community Development Director. So first, back to Millstone and the South County Initiative. South County Initiative was a number of projects that came in about the same time, about the same year, all in the same area, and they had their own side agreements between each other, and the county was not a party to. But with respect to this second entrance, and Rich, I think summarized it well before, you know, at some point, Millstone Landing, on its own, needs a second access, a safe access point. And so the improvements that are the subject of the meeting here, Seventeenth Street and Twenty-seventh Avenue, are needed to get to their back entrance. So, you know, whether the other projects happen or not, that's another matter for the future, but you're correct. Seventeenth Street Southwest will not be extended unless other property to the west is developed, such as on the north side, Turtle Creek, or further to the west of Millstone Landing. And the big-ticket item then will be a bridge to 43rd Avenue. So it's not planned to go through yet at this point in time. It will be development-driven as development projects come back online, if and when that happens to the west of Millstone and to the north of Millstone.
Right. I just wanted the people to know that they're not expecting to see, and I used 58th inadvertently when I should have been using 43rd Avenue to that, that they don't expect to see upon completion, hey, there's no bridge to the west, that it's not part of this particular agreement.
Right, and that will fill out the grid. And then on your other question about impact fees, Millstone Landing did purchase, basically concurrently, paid impact fees for a lot of units. I think it was around $4 million that they put out, and that money, of course, doesn't go to necessarily to right around the project itself. It goes into a district, and so I believe some of that money was used for Oslo Road improvements and other improvements in the South County area that do benefit the people there and other residents in South County, but not for what we're talking about today.
Correct. Lastly, you know, the home buyers that probably entered into contracts probably a year ago, you know, they pick out their house, they pick out their lot, they go through the process, six to eight weeks for a permit, then nine months to build. So when you take the clock back a year ago, I don't think anybody anticipated, the builders obviously wouldn't have, or else it would have been, they wouldn't have been selling something if they knew they couldn't deliver it and sell it. So I know we have a number of customers that are in that, kind of the domino effect, if they can't close on this house, they're not going to close on the house they're leaving from, and that just causes a lot of problems for folks, that somebody will end up in court somewhere when closings start defaulting because of another party. And I don't think this is a huge number of people. I'm guessing that in the COQ, there's, if you look at this window, I don't know a number, but do you have an estimated number?
I do. Actually, we ran the report this morning at 8:30, and at 8:30, we had, there are eight homes that have gone through the final inspection, so they're in final status. So the hold on their CO is due to this issue, so that's eight homes. And then there are 39 homes that a building permit has been issued for, and they're in various stages of construction. A lot of those were actually submitted in the summer months, you know, when the permit was issued, and they would be coming up and going all the way through to final at various times, so it's kind of spread out the other 39 that are in the pipeline, so to speak.
And it'd really be a tough call to say how many of those 39, what process they're in. Some are probably well underway, some may be still on paper and grassed out.
Right. They're in various stages, a couple in December, some in November. There were a lot in June and July, and a few in August.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioners, any further questions of staff at this point? At this time, is there anyone from SLV Millstone that wishes to speak? Good morning. If we could have your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. My name is Bruce Barquette, representing SLV Millstone. Couple of comments first. I appreciate you being here today. Thank you for, I know you adjusted your schedules, it's a special call meeting, we do appreciate it. Secondly, I want to point out, there are two sides to every story. We're kind of up here with our hands tied behind our back, because we need three votes in order to get COs issued, so I don't want to pick a fight here today. But I do want to point out that there are, you know, some issues that perhaps should be discussed a little further, maybe not in the form of a public hearing, but with For example, the amount of impact fees that were paid was $5 million, and that was paid at a time when your impact fee schedule was higher than it is today. Right now, they would be paying far less than that because your impact fee schedule's been reduced. So you've got money that the developer has paid that, by today's standards, you wouldn't be collecting. That's just a point to be made. The third thing, and this is probably the most important right now, the problem with setting a date, a deadline, is that the target date keeps moving. No matter what you say, the road can't be completed until those poles are moved. So we have no problem with you saying 65 days from the date the poles are moved, but if you say 60 days from today, you're just setting us up for a failure. It can't physically be done, according to our contractor, because the poles are still there. So you're setting us up for failure on day one, which doesn't make any sense to me. I don't see how it could make sense to you folks. We have no problem with saying 65 days from the date the poles are moved, and I understand that Mr. Spirica and Mr. O'Brien and perhaps others have contacted FPL and are now helping us to get the poles moved, which is great, but just target the date from the date the poles are moved. I mean, that would, otherwise, as I said, it's going to fail. It's just that I don't think there's any way around it. Secondly, I want to clear the air on what developer's agreements do, because I think there's a misunderstanding. It's not just being nice to the developer. Developer's agreements are usually guided by the traffic study and by the law. Concurrenty requires that the infrastructure be in place at the time the impact of the development is felt. If a project has 280 homes going in, and its traffic study says this road won't fail till the 250th home gets built, then you don't have to have that improvement done until the 250th home gets built. In fact, under Nolan and Dolan, you can't require the developer to do it before that, because you can't impose a restriction on the developer that isn't caused by his development. So developers' agreements aren't just driven by being nice to the developer. Developers' agreements are driven by state law for concurrency and by the United States Constitution, the United States Supreme Court's interpretation of the Constitution. It's not just a matter of, we will let you go ahead as long as you promise to build the road. Now, I can discuss that with Dylan out of chambers, if you want, but that's the fact of the matter. That's why you've got developer's agreements. So it's not just, no offense, Mr. Fletcher, it's not just being nice to the developer, it's because that's what the law requires, in some instances. Go ahead, Mr.
I agree, Counselor, but is it not a bilateral contract in future development that is generally bound by trust and agreement as well as a bond?
I'm not sure I understand the question. I'm just saying, you seem to say that we were just being nice to the developer. That's not the case. It's not just being nice to the developer, it's complying with the law.
That may be because of some of my statements, but I would say to Commissioner Fletcher's point, things like not requiring a bond or a letter of credit to ensure that the improvements are done, I think, is something that we could require, but we didn't and we haven't in this case.
No, and I don't disagree with that. I mean, I think that part's valid.
And I would hear the complaints from developers if we made them post security, if we decided to start making them post security from all this. So that is my point here, that we've been trying to work cooperatively, and what happens is when the developer fails to get the project done in time, now it becomes the county is sharing the blame in this not getting done. So that is my concern and the reason for my comments.
I understand that, and I think that probably is a good issue for workshopping, but I just wanted to dispel the myth that we were being nice because we needed to be nice, and we were just, now we're being taken advantage of. That's not the case with developer's agreements generally. And I just wanted to, and if we want to discuss that further, we could do that outside the room of this meeting, but I just wanted to make sure that you all understood.
And Counselor, you pointed out that you were being nice, and I wanted to point out, in concurrence with the county administrator, that we were being nice too, that there was a strong element of trust and commitment and honor and respect, that this was being done, so that there was not a bond.
Again, I don't want to pick a fight with you guys, but there are others, no, no. I mean, let me just point out to the fact, and Mr. DeBrol can attest to this fact. Pardon me?
We expected the job to be done.
No, I understand that, but, yeah. Oh. There is a bond for Seventeenth. I'm not sure, I would have Mr. O'Brien talk about that, but there are other factors that, again, I'm not trying to pick a fight, because you guys get to vote and I don't. But, for example, this amendment was languishing in your offices for more than a year before we ever could get it back out. We submitted this amendment well before you finally heard it, and you had a change in administration, you had a change in Public Works Director, and I'm not, this is no casting no aspersion on Mr. Spirica. We couldn't get the amendment back out from the county for a while. So, again, I think it was more than a year. When we finally got one back out, it was
When we finally got one back out, it was so unreasonable and so out of touch with what had been done before that we had to completely rework it. And that, Mr. Spirica probably can verify, because he was part of that reworking. So there are two sides to this story. Just wanted to point that out. So we would like to target the completion date from the time the poles are moved, and we think that's very reasonable. Secondly, I don't want to agree to substantial completion anymore. Give us a list. The substantial completion doesn't work, because it sort of depends on how Rich feels that morning. Again, no aspersions on Rich, but right now, we are trying to hit a target, and we didn't know what the target was. The target should be, does this affect when the road will be open? And my client will tell you, sir, some of the things on Rich's list could be done now. But will they advance the opening date of the road? No. It's kind of like doing busy work. Yeah, it could be done, but it's not going to, the public interest isn't necessarily being served. So unless the task at hand will advance the opening date of the road, then it's something that we should discuss. So instead of saying, like I said last time, instead of trying to put a smile on Rich's face, give us a list, give us a target list. And that's, then we've got an objective criteria to shoot for, if that's what the goal is. And then last, and I think Mr. Brian will discuss this. I understand about certificates of occupancy, and that definitely should be the trigger that you've got. But I don't fully understand building permits, because like Commissioner Zork said, the builders are not, the developer's not the builder. The developer sold the lots to the builders. The builders are the ones being penalized here and the people that buy the homes. So it's going to take, I think it takes a hundred-and-twenty days, and Mr. Brian can verify that. I think it takes at least a hundred-and-twenty days to build a home. So holding up building permits doesn't seem to be the way to go. Certificates of occupancy or requiring posting of a bond, for example, might be a better way to go than holding up the building permits. So, you know, in summary, I think I would like to see that this agreement be more fair if we target the date from the date the poles are moved, don't hold up building permits. And again, if you have to rely upon a bond, and I haven't discussed that with Mr. Brian, maybe that's the way to go. And thirdly, don't let it be up to anybody's discretion. Give us a list of objective criteria to satisfy, and then we're all on the same page. There'll be no reason to argue anymore. We'll be all on the same page. We'll know exactly what we need to do. And if we'd had that list this time, for example, I mean, one of the things that Mr. Spirica pointed out was, could have put a four-foot shoulder on Twenty-seventh Ave. Fine, could have done that. Didn't know that that's what he was looking for. Wouldn't have hurt any, well, it doesn't help anything, it wouldn't have hurt anything. It might have been cosmetically appealing, but we didn't know that that's what he was looking for. Had we known that, it would have been done. So if you give us an objective list to shoot for, that would make a lot more sense to me.
Bruce, if I may, two things. Your first point about FPNL, I did have a conference call with Bart Gaitens, who is our Public Affairs Representative,
Yes, sir.
and Andy Stark, who is Distribution Manager for FPL for this area. And according to Mr. Stark, they hope to be on-site this Wednesday to energize the underground. The underground lines are in. We did observe them. They're not connected yet. So Wednesday, they plan to connect those to power the new line. And then as long as the existing line doesn't have anything on it, like an AT&amp;T line or Comcast line, they hope to have those poles removed by the end of this week. Now, I think we might have heard that before, so I'll just put that out there. That's what they're telling me as of yesterday morning. That's their plan, is energize it Wednesday, and the pole's gone by the end of the week. To your point about a list, I don't want a list. I think when we get to this point, my recommendation is that the intersection will be complete, the traffic signal will be functioning, and everything will be signed off and it'll be done. So instead of a list, just the intersection will be complete and functional, active, cars going through it. That's how I see it.
That's a list. That's great.
Okay. It's a short list, but there it is.
No.
Okay. Thank you, Bruce.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, one other question either for Bruce or somebody. Just to put in perspective, I know we had, FPNL couldn't give the price to relocate till they had the permit. That took a period of time. But what was the date, that, once that was finally worked out, what was the date and the amount that FPNL was paid? And I know it was said to me, and I just don't have that page. I know it was two-hundred-and-fifty-some-odd-thousand, I think, to move the poles, but I know there was a date, and from that point forward, it's kind of been the waiting window.
I think it was like last May, but I'm going to let Mr. Brian answer.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't remember the specific, John Bryan, SLV Millstone.
Thank you.
I don't remember the specific dates, but we paid, in the neighborhood of $240,000. And we paid it within seven days of receiving the invoice.
Once you got the number?
Correct.
And I'm thinking it was April or May, based on some of that timeline document information.
I believe the payment was made in June, actually. So their permit was issued, I believe, in May. And the invoice was processed. It's got to go through the FPNL Processing Center. It doesn't come from the local office. So once we got it, we paid it within seven days. And we also paid AT&amp;T in the neighborhood of $20,000 to relocate their facilities.
Do we know when those poles, I was out there also Friday, and I saw AT&amp;T taking some wires off the pole that were right at the intersection of Twenty-seventh and Seventeenth, but I don't remember what's strung on the poles to the west. I'm trying to think, who else has to come in behind FPNL? If they get their equipment transferred over, is there still other wires hanging from other people? And I don't know how far the AT&amp;T guy went.
I believe AT&amp;T's the only conflict. They've got one existing pole that's not, you know, it's not in the current work zone. It'll be in the future clear zone once the turn lane is open. Their plan is to bore and bring that line under the road. So I think that is the last conflict.
Okay.
And at this point, to my knowledge, their lines have been removed from the FPNL lines.
Right. So roughly from June, from FPNL getting the payment to, we're now at February, so almost six and a half, seven months has been the waiting game for them. And obviously, you can do things around the poles, but if you can't get the road finished, some of those are cosmetic, some of those are functional improvements. But we all know FPNL has had a number of challenges, and they've done a great job. And now they're serving the great folks of Puerto Rico, helping them get their power restored. But that stretches the resources, and the winter has stretched the resources we normally would import into Florida. So it's been a challenging game for everybody in the power arena.
Right. You know, I don't want to stand up here and make excuses, but a lot of the work that FPNL had to do was right at the intersection. They didn't complete that work until December. So, you know, FPNL has always been the critical path item. So our goal was to allow them to do their work and then follow immediately behind them, which is what we did. And you can see the progress that we made once they were out of the way at the intersection at Twenty-seventh.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Fletcher?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate Commissioner Zork pointing out that, and you said it, that within seven days, you paid that $240,000. Was that the first time that you had negotiated, contracted with FPNL to get this job done? Or was it some time back?
No, we had, you know, when we approved the developers' agreement in October, we had plans drawn for Seventeenth. We submitted those plans two weeks after our first hearing regarding this matter. We had had discussions with FPNL, and at that point, the expectation had been set with them. This is how long it's going to take us to create plans. This is how long it's going to take us to get it on the schedule. And at that point, it was a non-issue. They were going to be out of the way May, June, and we would have six months to complete the balance of the work. And so we had had discussions with FPNL going back into, really, beginning of 2016.
And, well, it was a, it's a long time to...
It is a long time.
Come up with, but, and then again, I just, there was some light shed about, you know, within seven days, $240,000 was paid. But this thing has been going on for quite some time.
Right.
There was a lot of negotiations being done. There was a lot of understanding being done. And that is the contributing factor to the great delay, no?
Yeah, FPNL, you know, the way the process works is FPNL has to see where we're going to put the road to determine where they need to relocate their facilities. I mean, ultimately, the county tells them where they have to put the poles. You know, and once our alignment was finalized, those plans were submitted to FPNL. And at that point, they proceeded with their design.
I just pointed out the taking ownership, I mean, you know, the, referring back to just a few weeks ago, the blame game to FPNL, big bad FPNL who did not do the work in time, so we're in this terrible situation, coupled with the rain. I think there's a lot of dispersed concern, obligation, and blame placed on others when we need to just get this thing done.
No, I mean, look, our goal is to get it done, but keep in mind, we don't own the right-of-way. We don't have the right to issue FPNL a permit. We can't tell them to do anything. We don't have that right. So, I mean, you know, I don't want to stand up here and sound like I'm making excuses, but we have certain limitations. You know, we were permitted to work within the right-of-way, as was FPNL. I mean, they weren't working under our scope of work. They're working with us.
I guess we should just be grateful that eventually, when there was an agreement made, that within seven days, you paid the $240,000.
Right. I think the factors that we could control, you know, to push this project forward, I think we certainly did that. We tried to do that.
Thank you.
And to the point, you know, I just want to make a general point, too. You know, there's a lot of discussion about our inability to perform. I just want to, you know, take you guys back. In 2011, when we bought this property, there were 155 houses. A hundred were owned by residents, fifty-five were owned by the bank. There were incomplete entries. There were incomplete amenities. There was an entire side of the project that had yet to been completed. The utilities weren't certified. The roads weren't completed. The improvements weren't completed. I think, you know, it's worth pointing out that those items are done now. You know, we took the initiative. We completed those items. We completed the amenities, certified the utilities, completed the development. And now we're fulfilling the off-site obligations, you know, that the prior developer intervened to. Twenty-third Street wasn't an off-site obligation. That was a part of the developers' agreement. It was on the zoning plan. We wanted to add it to the developers' agreement. We wanted to add it to our scope of work. We did that. So I'm, you know, certainly not looking for credit, but I think the track record, going back to the beginning of the project, and really when we became involved, I think it illustrates our ability to get it done, not the opposite that seems to be, you know, a point of discussion. You know, when we're specifically talking about Seventeenth Street.
And as Counsel points out, there were two sides to every story. I'm sure that was taken into consideration,
Right.
that you entered into a pretty banged-up subdivision that needed a lot of help. And in 2011, I'm sure the price was negotiated fairly inequitably, so that work could be done. But thank you for doing it.
Yeah.
Is that it, Brian?
Sure, unless you guys have any questions.
Listening to any further questions of Mr. Brian?
None, Mr. E. Lewis.
Okay. Thank you. At this point, go ahead and see if anyone from the public wishes to comment on this. If you would like to, please come up and give your name and address for the record.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Joseph Powlen, I'm the President of Black Swan Consulting and also the President of Lanico's Building. I'm a builder and a developer in this area and have been for twenty years. I'm very familiar with developers' agreements, and so I speak from some kind of background and experience. Number one, to simplify a developers' agreement, Mr. Barquette was correct in his explanation, and Rich was correct in his. It's a contractual agreement between two entities or two people. I've entered into over a dozen developers' agreements in this county alone. And the county relies on me to do certain things to get done, and I rely on the county to do certain things for me to go forward with my development. If I don't get my things done, I'm wrong. If the county don't get their things done, then I'm on their doorstep, because I can't go forward. It's a very, this county was built on developers' agreement. I got off-site work out there on 65th, 58th that I still haven't been paid for, but the developers' agreement was completed by me, but business went down. Government should not get in the way of trying to control the market. Every time they do, they screw it up. The market is free enterprise. Two people entered into the developers' agreement. The developer knew he had to get certain things done that he should have. He didn't get it done. He's wrong. By us doing this is bad business. You're setting a precedence for other developers to come in here. This is what I do, people. I know what I'm talking about. Next time you get into this problem, they're going to say, hey, you did it for them. Why can't you do it for us? It's not good business. You're being a participant into them doing bad business. And to let them to continue to CO homes, you're letting them make money going forward when they didn't do their job. You have the leverage right now. You're never going to have more leverage than you do today. This is the most leverage you're ever going to have. If they didn't get the job done when you have all the leverage, what the hell you think the chances are getting the job done when you give up some of the leverage? It's bad business. It's not good business. You need to set the precedence. If the county signs the developers' agreement, the developer comes in here like me or anybody else, I expect you to live up to your part of the bargain. And if they sign the developers' agreement, whether it rains or bad weather, or whatever it is, listen, we've got to take all that in consideration when we sign the agreement. We need to start worrying about that, not the day before the deadline. We've got to worry about that the day we sign the developers' agreement. And that's the way you go forward. This did not happen, according to your staff. They could have done a lot more a lot earlier. And as far as FPNL, it's really easy to blame the big guy. FPNL, they're bad people. They negotiated with FPNL. When you negotiate, you're responsible for half of that problem, because you're half the negotiations. So maybe it would have taken more money to get it done. Several times, I paid more money to get something done with FPNL or other entities that I shouldn't have had to pay, but I knew I had to do it to get it done. Because the way you make your money is to sell those lots and sell those homes. So we're not the bad guy here. The county's not the bad guy. So let the builder put more pressure on the developer. That's fine. That's their job. They got to get it done. It's not our job to interfere and take care of everybody. They signed an agreement. They didn't live up to the agreement. It's just that simple. I mean, everybody's got to write their own opinion. They got an opinion that FPNL was wrong. FPNL has an opinion they were wrong. The people that are sitting out here that are in that development, they're the innocent people. They bought a house. They closed on it. They're living there. They expected these things to be done. They're innocent people. The guy that's still trying to make money off this development, that's not an innocent party. That's a business agreement. Business is tough. If you don't have the stomach for it, you shouldn't be in it. It's just that simple. They didn't live up to their agreement. You're never going to have more leverage than you do today. You need to hold your feet to the fire and make them do what they agreed to do. If you ask them to do something they didn't agree to do, I'd be on their side. You can't do that. Listen, several years ago, I signed a developers' agreement with the county, put a left turn lane in on 58th Avenue for Hidden Lake. They had six years to do it. We signed the developers' agreement. Okay, Mr. Powlen, you do all this. We'll have a left turn lane in in six years. That's okay. Sign the contract. We signed the contract. I marked it on my calendar. Six years and one day, I showed up at Joe Bear's office. I said, hey, Joe, read this. Yeah, what do you want? I said, well, six years and one day, you're holding $60,000 of my money. I want my sixty grand. No problem. We walked down to the county attorney's office, and they wrote me a check for sixty grand, because you didn't live up to your part of the agreement. When you do live up to your part of the agreement, you need to hold them to the same strict part of the contract that I hold you to. That's only fair, people. That's good business. By doing this, you're setting a bad precedence for somebody to come in further down the road and say, listen, two years ago, you did this for Millstone Landing. That's what we do as developers. We try and use every edge we can. What are you going to say? That was different? Case by case? Terrible words. Keating probably rolling over right now wherever he's living. He hates those three words, case by case. But anyway, this is the agreement you have. You made the agreement. You don't negotiate the agreement thirty days after it's passed due. You negotiate it the day before you sign the contract. Then whatever you negotiate and you sign, you start living up to that day one. If you don't live up to that day one, you can't come in here at midstream and start renegotiating things. Well, give us a list. Give us this. Listen, everything Bruce says is right. He didn't do anything wrong. He's saying the right thing. He's representing his client. But his client negotiated that contract. They signed it. This is your strongest day you'll ever have. Don't give it up.
Mr. Powlen, okay, want to get some other folks in? So, thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak from the public? Come on upstairs to the podium here, and your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Richard DeSosio. I live in Millstone. And I'm not speaking for a group or a group of people. I'm speaking for myself as a resident. The last time that I was here, by the way, I forgot to say good morning.
Good morning.
It's almost afternoon. The last time I was here, when the agreement was made and had a conversation with... Last time I was here, when the agreement was made, and, and had a conversation with, with Peter during, in the, in the middle of it, and, and I had commented and pointed out to the Starwood or SLV, I said, they're not going to keep the agreement. And I remember Peter said, oh, yeah, we're going to hold them to it. And I said, well, they're going to get out of it. Now, comments have been made publicly by allegedly, that, there's a lot of loopholes. We can get out of this agreement. We have a lot of attorneys, and believe me, Starwood, Marriott, whoever the owner is, if you have to trace it down, but one of the words that the attorney used was languish, languishing, and I believe that's what's been happening with SLV. This agreement, unless it was a surprise to them, was made six years ago, they knew six years ago that they had to do this. Now, if I promised my wife I was going to paint the bathroom six years ago, and I didn't do it, I would lose my CO.
There's a big bond on that one.
I want to know how you got six years to paint the bed. I get like six months.
She surprises me every day putting up with me. One of the, now, one of the problems that's happening from this delay on 17th Street is the problem at 21st Street and 27th, very dangerous intersection. If anybody's ever had to take a left out of there, there's been accidents, and there's going to be more accidents, and the delay at 17th Street is contributing to the delay at, for the light at 21st Street. Well, I, I don't, now, one of the things, you know, we haven't, haven't had a fantastic relationship with, with SLV, because some of the decisions that they've made have negatively affected our community. One of the decisions that they made was they, they, they sold, I think, the whole other side, the south side of Millstone, and it's now, it's called Millstone South, or Millstone Landing South, or whatever. They have, one of the things they have done to us is they set up, they set up another HOA, an association for this other area, whatever they want to call it. But they also allowed this other area, this other HOA, to use our facilities, our clubhouse, our pool, and whatever. Yes, we're getting some fees from it, but we are a private, we're a private road, we're a private community, yet Starwood is allowing, has allowed this other community to come in and use our facilities. And some of us view that as a problem. Now, one of the comments from one of the people on the south about their, what they're considering doing is, because of the problem at 21st Street Light, is that when our, when this 17th Street is completed, that they plan on driving through Millstone North to use that exit. They're not members of our community. But this isn't some, this is something that hasn't been addressed by SLV. I don't even know if they've considered it, or if they care.
And sir, if we could just kind of keep to the 17th Street, I know there's other issues there, but we need to focus on the issue before, please.
Well, as, as part of the issue is, this delay is causing this. I mean, there's, you know, it's like a pile-on, it's like when you put those bricks together and you pull one out, you know, you're going to lose part of the continuity of, of that. I don't think, I don't think that we should, that you should allow SLV to get out of the agreement. And I believe this, that SLV always had planned on getting out of the agreement. Six years is long enough to get a quarter-mile road done. Those are my comments. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else from the public that wishes to speak on this? Ma'am, please come up.
Good morning. My name is Mary Bennett. I also live in Millstone, and I bought a house in 2011. And I'm sure a lot of you already know that Millstone has a history of non-compliance with developers, and it was only through this commission that we even got any amenities, because when the initial developer, Shelby, left on a bankruptcy, he left and did not put in the clubhouse and the pool, and it was only through withholding of building permits that got even a semblance of the things that he originally promised. Now, when SLV bought the development, they knew that it required two access roads, but they waited. They waited because they said we hadn't had enough occupancy, and they waited till the last number. They'd known for six years. And being a teacher, the only thing that I can make an analogy with, it's as if a student had a term paper due, and they didn't turn it in because their dog died the night before. Well, they'd known for six years that they would have problems, they knew that the FPL poles would have to be moved, but they waited until one year prior to say, well, we've got all of this work to do, how can you expect to put a deadline on this when we're having to rely on somebody else for completion? If we do not have leverage to make them to complete what they knew that they had signed up for, they will just keep extending it. They've already said they can't, they can't be burdened with a date because it's not on them, it's depending on somebody else. And they will continue to have homes sold in that development and realize the profits from that without any repercussions or any way to stop and get them to do the work that they promised to complete, which is necessary for, if you try to have access to that road in, in the occasion of an emergency, there's only one access for 300 and, I don't know, 70 people? 370 people. So if there's a hurricane where we all have to leave, we only have one road. So this is a safety issue, and they're endangering us, not only in inconvenience, it has now become where they have almost full occupancy in the development, and now they have putting the residents in danger. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that wishes to speak? Come on up, ma'am. Your name and address for the record, please.
Anne Reno, 2030 Bennington Court, Southwest, Millstone resident. I just want to say thank you to the Director of Public Works, and also to Commissioner O'Brien for agreeing to the accommodation of providing signage to reduce the speed limit across 27th Street for the safety of the Millstone communities while the construction is ongoing. And also, I just have a comment about the developers' agreements and about the leverage contention with the developers' agreements, and it seems to me, one of the problems that has been made an effect of the developers' agreements is that by not retaining a bond for the developers to complete what they need to do, that the homeowners and the builders are being unnecessarily affected, and just wondering why there was no percentage of completion done to decrease the bond and to basically force the developers to complete things on time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that wishes to speak? Okay. Commissioners, where I am on this is, when Commissioner Zork brought this up, I was opposed to his motion at the time, and part of it was because I thought it would set a bad precedent, that we do have these developer agreements, and that we need to enforce them, and that if we don't do it with this one, as was pointed out earlier, then we, we open up the Pandora's Box of, of having to do it for everybody, and because of my consideration for the existing 300, or 300-plus existing homeowners that are being negatively impacted by the delay. However, in a, a spirit of compromise and consideration of those homeowners that paid for a house but yet couldn't close, that's why I suggested we give them three weeks and have this special call meeting for reconsideration. I've been disappointed in the progress that was made in the last three weeks. Rich mentioned in his backup report that we had a meeting, that staff had a meeting with SLV, and he didn't highlight the fact that one of the things SLV did was bring down a, an attorney from Tallahassee to deliver a 17-page report, kind of basically telling us all the things the county did wrong. And that kind of irks me. And so instead of spending money on an attorney and all that stuff, they could have been putting that towards getting this project moving. I have a, and when we met on site last Friday, Rich and Jason were not overly enthusiastic about moving forward with an extension, but they gave me the indication that if I did want to call a special call meeting and consider an extension, that they would work with it and, and go with that, but they weren't very excited after our field inspection. I am concerned about the lack of progress on 23rd Street, and I'm very concerned about a, a whiplash effect of COs on, off, on, off, and that will cause even more disruption for future homeowners not knowing if and when they can ever move into their home. And I agree with what Mr. Barquette said, is that we should give them clarity. And so based upon that, while I can't make a motion, what I'd like to see done today is that, that the board reinstate the issuance of certificates of occupancy through January 31st, 2018. That would allow the existing eight homes that are ready for CO to go forward, but after that, there'd be no more COs. Two, that we continue the suspension of building permit applications, as well as the acceptance of new building permit applications, and that the board will allow COs and building permits to be issued once the 17th Street and 27th Avenue intersection is up and fully functioning, meaning there's traffic on 17th Street, the signal is energized and working, and traffic is flowing in and out of that intersection. And if I could make a motion, that'd be the motion I make.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Adams. We have a motion by Commissioner Adams, I will second that. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chair, just for clarification on staff's part, when you mentioned the 17th Street intersection functioning, that implies the completion of 17th Street all the way to the west, so that the Millstone residents can get there.
That is, yes, I want the entire length of that road to the, the northern egress point of Millstone Landing to be functional, including sidewalks, bike lanes, landscaping, striping, the whole, the whole list, as, as Mr. Barquette requested, that that road is functional, the signal's functional and energized, and traffic is moving through that, that signal.
Commissioner Adams, was that your motion?
That was my motion, yes.
And I'll confirm my second. Stan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to point a clarification, you said January 31st being tomorrow, 8:30, 5:00 PM. It, it makes a difference in if, if there happened to be any final inspections scheduled, you know, I'm not aware of that. So is the intent, the eight that we know of right now?
That's my intent, yes.
We've got, we've got the eight defined already, we know exactly those eight. So if that's the, the intent of the motion, we can easily execute that.
Okay. Thank you, Stan. Commissioners, any other comments for discussion?
I have one, just a clarification. Typically, you'll see a road get open with temporary striping, because from the asphalt application, you have a cure time before you want to put your final striping down, so you could be opening and functional, but with the initial striping, but not the final layer of striping, and maybe Rich can explain that a little bit better.
Commissioner, it's going to be the final striping. It's, it's going to be done, okay? You're, you're getting to where Bruce said they didn't want as a list of things.
Okay.
Yeah or nay? I can tell you, the only thing to make Rich happy is if the Patriots win on Sunday, but other than that, the, the intent of this motion, I assume Commissioner Adams will concur, is that this thing is done, that there's no further work to be done.
Yes.
All right. Because that takes two weeks off the timeframe to get things done, so it's even a shorter window. Okay. Just so that they now have a list.
Commissioner Adams?
Yeah, and I appreciate where, where we're going with this. I did have concerns about the eight final, the eight homes that were in final completion, but I have more concerns about the precedent that extending this will set. We are in, we are set to have a lot of development in the future, and I think this lays the groundwork for what other developers may try to do. If the shoe was on the other foot, I guarantee we would be held accountable, and I think what we're doing is appropriate, and is about as reasonable in the circumstances as I'm willing to be. I think that this is a self-created crisis, and anybody in business knows what you need to do to get the job done. And quite frankly, I'm sure if the developer had come to the county prior to this self-imposed crisis, then something could have been worked out. And I know staff is always willing to work with people if they're willing to do their part, and this is a situation that I'm glad we're bringing to conclusion. I wish the developer luck in getting his stuff done, because I think we all want to see this done and done appropriately. But that being said, that motion is as it stands, and that is full completion to the point of every i's dotted and t's crossed.
Thank you. Any other comments from the commissioners? I wrote, as we have a motion on the floor, if Mr. Barquette, if you or Mr. Bryan would like to comment to the motion, I'll gladly give you a little time. See you, none?
I mean, the only request that I would make would be in regards to the temporary versus permanent striping. I mean, you could be talking about a 30-day difference there, and it doesn't, it doesn't impact the traffic.
I, I still want it done.
I mean, if it's beneficial occupancy, that's one thing, final completion is another. So, I mean, there's a big difference in the two.
Okay. Thank you.
What's, what's the threshold for the developers' agreement? I mean, done as done as done?
Done as done, but temporary striping allows completion of the intersection, it's just a curing function of the asphalt. Well, Mr. Barquette wants a list, and done as done is the list. I would have no problem allowing them to be done, except for final striping. It's a curing, it's a curing issue, they can come in at night, nobody will be affected, they can put down the thermoplastic and be done with it and out of there. So in this particular case, I would have no, absolutely no problem allowing, you know, them to move forward, once everything is done, except for the thermo, because it, it is a curing issue with the asphalt. That would be my suggestion.
Well, as far as I'm concerned, done as done to your specification, so if that is considered done for you, then that works for me.
That's fine, thank you.
I'll amend my second to include that, just for clarification, we're saying that nothing will move forward as far as COs or building permits until the intersection is completed, except for the final striping. Is that-
That's correct.
Is that good enough for you, Rich?
Yep, that's good.
Okay. All right. Commissioners-
Mr. Chairman, one last question. There was a mention of a bond, since FPNL was paid, that's not a bond, is, is there a bond on something or not? I've got, I've got head-
For the roadway, no. There's no bond for either 23rd Street Southwest or 17th Street.
There's a performance guarantee in place for 17th Street, to the tune of $1.7 million. There is a performance guarantee in place that the county has.
Counsel, do you know what-
It was, it was posted with our, it had to be posted prior to the issuance of our right-of-way permit, so that surety does exist.
Well, that's something we can-
Okay.
-straighten out down the road, I, I don't think it's germane to the motion on the floor. So we have motion by Commissioner Adams, second by Commissioner O'Brien. All in favor of the motion signify with aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries four to one, with Commissioner Fletcher opposed. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you coming out for this, we appreciate your time and everybody's input, and with that, we stand adjourned.